Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley? Commissioner, you're muted. I'll come back to her. Commissioner Higgins?
Also muted?
Yeah, I... Should I not have my sound... Should I have my sound be on on my... either my laptop or on the Zoom? Okay. Yes? Okay, thank you. We can hear you now. Commissioner Stoudamire?
Oh, I can't hear anything if someone is talking to me. Sorry.
Can someone come look at my laptop and make sure my settings are correct?
Is the audio working?
I can hear you, but I can't hear the room.
Oh, neither can I. I can't even see the room, so...
Can you make sure the room...
I can't... Well...
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely.
And I don't want to keep my audio on because I'm coughing and hacking, so...
Um, give us just a minute. We're doing some IT troubleshooting.
Okay.
Oh, this isn't just twice.
Bueno. Okay.
Are we ready? Can you hear us, commissioners?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, back to calling the role.
Thank you. Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland invites public to access and attend this meeting in person. There's also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. The public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. All right, item two is commissioners' reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report this month? Nope? Anybody... Anybody online would like to report?
Tava, do you want to report on our award?
Uh, yes, I could... I could, uh, report that we did receive a very nice award from the Portland Business Alliance, now known as the Portland Metropolitan Chamber. Um, and that was just for the good works of Prosper Portland. Um, and there were a number of staff members in attendance, and I was there. Uh, Michi was there, Serena was there. Who else was there? I guess, yeah, so, but it was a very nice event, so thank you for the prompt. Appreciate that. Um, anybody else have anything?
No, nothing for me.
Okay, we've had lots of things percolating behind the scenes, as always, but nothing else to report. Um, so, next up, we have the interim executive director report with Lisa Abath.
There's... Um, there are a number of events and staff work that I'm pleased to share with you as an update. Um, first, I want to talk a little bit about the next steps of what we have going around our TIF district work. So, this past Monday, Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau closed the application process for our three TIF district community leadership committees in East Portland. That's, um, committees that will serve in 82nd Avenue, the Sumner Park Rose, Argie, Columbia Corridor area, as well as East 205. Each district will have a 13-member community leadership committee, and the first task for each of those committees will be to develop their five-year action plan for each respective district. And just as a reminder, the action planning is a budgeting and prioritization process done in coordination with our community stakeholders and partners to identify how to spend anticipated resources over the first five years of the tax increment finance districts. And I'll be back next month to provide an update on the, um, the commission's meet... at the commission's meeting. But, uh, in the interim, folks can go to prosperportland.us/eastpdx if you are interested in learning more about those committees, the roles that they'll play, um, and be on the lookout for who we bring forward as the nominated rosters for each of those CLCs. And in the central city, our working groups for the new West Side, Lloyd Holiday, and Central East Side Corridor districts also kicked off their work with their first meeting last Wednesday. They'll host a second joint meeting on June 26th before they'll split up into individual districts and undertake similar work around their action plans. Um, we would note that the process for the central city teams is a bit different than in East Portland in that through these meetings and ad hoc committees, they'll co-create their action plans and in fact, give a recommendation about whether there is a standing oversight body, uh, into the future for our central city work. And we aim to wrap up our central city work towards the end of this calendar year into early next year with the ability to present recommendations to the board and city council by early 2026. I also want to note that the Governor's Task Force on the central city that is now titled "All In on Portland Central City" has been released. Uh, the Governor's Task Force really underscores the important role that our central city plays as essential to both our regional and our statewide economic health. And there's a lot of great information in the report. A few things that I'd like to highlight. Uh, one is opportunities for all of us to collectively lean into the role of our central city as a complete urban neighborhood, a hub for innovation and opportunity and economic growth, and as a regional gathering place. There's also a call in that report from the Governor's work for both public nonprofit and private partners to help execute on the vision. Um, and there's great alignment between the recommendations in that report and Advance Portland. Um, it's worth noting that our work and our role in a number of projects touches over 70 projects that are in the report. And if folks are interested in the Governor's report, that is at portlandcentralcitytaskforce.com/allin. Um, next, I'd like to highlight that Prosper Portland's Office of Small Business is hosting another Show Up for Small Business event. Hopefully, you had the opportunity to attend the one at Ankeny Alley. This event will be held at the Mosaic Tap House in St. John's on Tuesday, June 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Show Up for Small Business events are done in collaboration with Better Portland, with Pi, Latino Founders, and the Portland Metro Chamber, as well as Built Oregon. And everybody's invited to wander in, grab foods, drinks, or other goods, and to support our small businesses, particularly during the summer months. We also wanted to share that, um, we're excited to announce that the next My Peoples Market is back on for Saturday, June 28th and Sunday, June 29th. It will be held at the Rose Corridor Commons. Uh, that's over in Lower Albina. Founded by Prosper Portland and Travel Portland, My Peoples Market is a celebration of business, arts, and culture that provides space and resources for new and existing businesses to grow and reach new markets. And for more information on this year's market, in fact, it's the 16th market that we'll be hosting, please go to mypeoplesmarket.com. And next, I'm super excited to welcome, um, Reyna Vegas, who is joining the investment team as a senior loan servicing specialist. And she'll fill a much-needed position supporting the lending, legal, and accounting team with loan closings and loan servicing. This is a really critical role for our lending team. Reyna has spent the past 20 years working in both residential and commercial finance, where she's done everything from originations to operations and servicing. Uh, her love for this field, along with a deep passion for educating others about how to navigate through the lending process, has kept her constantly leaning into this profession and to this industry and evolving with the ever-changing nature of the lending business. Uh, she's also spent over a decade engaged in community work, which continues to be a big part of who she is and why she came to this work. Reyna recently reached her first anniversary of living in Portland and says she's fallen in love with the natural beauty here and wants to see the city grow, heal, and prosper. Pun intended. And finally, wanted to honor that tomorrow is Juneteenth, and the Prosper Portland office will be closed to mark the occasion and also invite you... There are a number of events, um, that are out in community and invite you to attend the 53rd Annual Oregon Juneteenth Event happening at the, um, Albina Park on Saturday, June 21st, from noon to 7:00 p.m. And if you're also able, stop by the Prosper Portland table that will be at that event. And for more information on the Oregon Juneteenth Festival, please visit juneteenthoregonor.com. And with that, that's... That concludes everything that staff is working on. Welcome. Welcome to new staff as well.
Great, thank you, and welcome, Reyna. Thanks for joining us. Okay, uh, item four is meeting minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the May 14, 2025 minutes?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Felicia has her hand up.
Aye.
Great. All right, minutes are proceeding down in the sleep.
Um, I actually had a... I had a request for Lisa Tava, if it's possible, to get a, um, sort of a crosswalk of Advanced Portland and the Governor's Central City, um, report so that we just have something that we can kind of reference as we continue our work on the board.
We're happy to do that. That's a great idea. I think it would showcase a lot of the work that's happening in different neighborhoods throughout the central city.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, uh, next up, we have item five. This is public comment for items, yes. June 6 minutes? Oh, excuse me. Uh, yes, we need to, don't we? Sorry. Uh, so, June 6, 2025 minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve June 6 minutes.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That was our special meeting. Okay, so, now, item five. Um, this is public comment for items not on the agenda. So, does anyone, um, have we... Pam, have we received a request for any, uh, comments for items not on the agenda? Okay. Okay, um, next up? Oh, I should just notice, note that while I'm thinking of public comment, if folks are here to talk about item 11, uh, please fill out one of these cards, uh, before you come up to speak. Thank you. Um, okay. And as I mentioned earlier, the public can provide public comment to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. So, now we will, um, adjourn our Prosper Portland Board meeting and convene the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission hearing. This is item six. So, we're now recessing the Prosper Portland Board meeting and convening the Tax Supervising Commission, excuse me, Conservation Commission meeting. And without further ado, I'll turn this over to Chair Quirros.
Thank you. Um, so I will... I know, back and forth.
Yes.
Start, I'll start. Uh, so I'll officially call to order the annual, um, Prosper Portland Budget Hearing. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Harmony Quidos. I am the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. Just as a reminder, the TSCC is a community oversight commission established by the Oregon Legislature more than 100 years ago. The commission oversees the budgets of all TSCC member taxing districts and annually conducts a thorough budget review and certification process. In addition, the TSCC holds public budget hearings like this one to engage with district leadership and provide additional opportunity for public comment before the budget is adopted. I will now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and state if they have any business relationships with the district that could be perceived as a conflict of interest. And we can start to my right with Allison.
Hi, good afternoon. Allison Lugo-Napp. This is my second year on the TSCC. I'm an organizational development consultant by day, and I don't have any business with the district.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Burton, and this is my second year on the commission. Um, I don't have any business in front of, uh, Prosper Portland. Uh, my background is in public finance. I've worked as a budget officer, finance officer for a number of local jurisdictions, including, uh, the Portland Development Commission, now Prosper Portland, about 20 years ago, and there's still a few familiar faces here, so I'm glad to be back.
Good afternoon.
Check.
All right. Matt Donahue, uh, fourth year on the commission, serving as, uh, vice chair. Uh, my day job is as a municipal bond banker and financial advisor. And I don't have any business or conflicts with the district. I apologize in advance. I have to leave early to catch a flight. It's not because anyone said anything that offended me that I walked out, so... Therefore, I...
Hello? There we go. Um, my name is Rita Moore. Uh, this is my first year on the commission. Uh, I'm a former policy analyst for the state, a former Portland School Board member, and I have no conflicts.
I'm Brittany Abiari, the budget analyst with TSCC.
And I'm Allegra Willhite, Executive Director with TSCC.
Again, I'm Harmony Quidos. This is my seventh and final year with TSCC. Uh, in my other life, I, uh, I started my career as a teacher. I still work in K-12 science curriculum and assessment. Uh, would the Prosper Portland representatives please introduce themselves? We're conferring, so... Start with introductions?
Yes, thanks. Um, so, sorry about that. Just a brief, um, things change all the time. Uh, just wanted to say thanks very much to all of you for coming today. We always have a great discussion with the commission. So, um, so thanks very much. Sometimes it feels a little scripted, but there are great ideas that come out. And, uh, sometimes we have a little opportunity for back and forth, too, so that's always terrific, and we appreciate your input. So, thank you.
Uh, with the... Uh, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Okay. Okay, as an introduction?
Yeah, yeah.
Tava Cruz, I'm the board chair. I'm a lawyer by day. Um, I've been on the board for about 10 years, and I've been the board chair for about nine years.
I'm Michi Slick. Um, I'm a commissioner on the board of Prosper Portland. Uh, my day job, I work in real estate, and I joined the commission about two years ago. I think that's right.
Hi, everyone. Marcelino Alvarez, also board commissioner, uh, and by day, I run an electric propulsion startup.
Okay, and then, uh, Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley?
Hi, this is Serena Stoudamire Wesley, and sorry I don't have my camera on, but I have lingering COVID, and I'm not doing very well today. Um, and in my day job, I am the Assistant Director at Department of Transportation for Equity and Civil Rights.
Great, thank you. And then, do we have Commissioner Higgins?
I'm Felisa Higgins. Uh, I've been on the prosper board since November of last year. And in my day job, I am the Executive Director of the Oregon State Council for the Service Employees International Union. And so, I am running tardy because I'm driving back from Salem, so I'm on my way.
Great, thank you.
Uh, we'll begin with public comment, and then we'll ask our questions and discuss the budget with you. Uh, we're looking forward to a robust conversation. We've already talked about, as a reminder, since we only have a short time today, if we could keep the reading of any, um, written comments brief to allow for a little more back and forth discussion, feel free to speak openly and directly. Uh, are there, uh... We can start with any introductory comments that interim executive director has.
Um, I just welcome, I think the board has had a chance to see the questions and see responses. I appreciate, I think, you're both partnering with us and thinking about, uh, how we can share more information about the budget process to date, um, and then I would hand it back to the chair.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll call on any members of the public who would like to speak. Each person is limited to three minutes of public comment, and we'll let you know when you're nearing the end of your time. Allegra, do we have any members of the public signed up to testify?
No, we have no public comment today.
Okay, we'll go ahead and dive into our questions. Todd has the first one.
Great, thank you, Harmony. This is Harmony's last meeting, and I'm gonna...
I have one more.
Oh, that's right.
We have another one today.
Oh!
Well, this is her last meeting with the Prosper Portland. I jumped the gun, I'm sorry. I just want to say something nice to you because she is so great. I'm gonna miss her.
I'll let him say it.
Anyway, um, we want to talk about, uh, some of the interactions you've had with the city council recently. Um, and thank you for sharing your May 8 briefing, uh, that you provided to the city council, which I believe probably was the first deep dive maybe the councilors had had with Prosper Portland. That was also shared with us, which, as a former employee, found very interesting and informative. You had subsequent budget discussions, uh, with the city council. Um, those are reported quite well. And based on those discussions and the budget committee meetings, um, that followed, what were your key takeaways for Prosper Portland?
Great, thank you for the question. So, while Prosper Portland's May 8 proposed budget presentation to city council was our first opportunity to present the agency's full business lines and budget to the full new city council, we've had some limited but significant previous touchpoints with them as well. From late January through early 2025, staff provided four council district-specific briefings on Prosper Portland, Prosper Portland's Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, work, and the six new approved TIF districts in East Portland and the central city. On April 28, 2025, Prosper Portland had the opportunity to present our proposed budget to the Finance Committee. Presentation materials included information about Prosper Portland's governance, city council budget and policy direction via the council-approved Advanced Portland Strategy, TIF district plans and action plans, and the housing production strategy. We have not had the opportunity to engage with the Arts and Economy Committee as part of their regular discussions. Key takeaways from our interactions with city council as a body, as well as individual council offices, include the following. The need for ongoing relationship building, exchange and collaboration between Prosper Portland Partners, client, staff, and city council offices to share information and better understand areas of alignment between Prosper Portland's programs, investments, and outcomes, and city council priorities for economic development. The need to involve city council offices in significant community engagement efforts to hear from and exchange directly with community partners, particularly tied to initiatives that involve or anticipate direct city council approval, including the development of six new TIF action plans. And the need to identify ongoing opportunities to provide transparent outcomes, reporting on a more... ongoing opportunities to provide transparent outcomes, reporting on a more regular cadence with City Council offices and committees.
I know this is very early in your process in terms of building that relationship with the new City Council. I mean, what are some of your maybe most, most high priority steps going forward?
Would you like to elaborate on that, Lisa, or shall I? I can comment a little bit. I mean, we've, we're basically, you know, to be honest with you, we're kind of in initial stages on some of that. We've been trying to arrange regular meetings with the staff and the councilors as well. You know, we have our new exec, new Executive Director will be here shortly. We haven't made a public announcement about that yet, a formal public announcement for confidentiality reasons, but that'll be forthcoming soon. So some of these things will come into alignment shortly, and we will have some more clear and regular interactions. So, you know, it's, it's been a little bit challenging, I think it's fair to say, given that we have a brand-new City Council and new staff members and a brand-new mayor who all kind of have different views of things and some who are not, you know, fully up to speed with Prosper Portland. So, so it's been, it's been a steep curve so far, but that will get better.
I know Prosper, oh.
No, I was just gonna add, I think also at a staff level, they're really interested in making sure that there are opportunities for district offices and/or the mayor to get, to engage with our work, whether it's visiting with small businesses or participating as part of the TIFF district committees. I think there's just good opportunity for them to kind of be in the work with us with community.
And one of the issues that really came up in those hearings was governance, too. Having an independent board through Prosper Portland, working with the City Council, and having certain powers. Is that something that will be part of the ongoing discussion with the city as you move forward?
I think it's fair to say it will, although we don't have specifics on that yet. It's something that different councilors have brought up in discussions. But there's a long history to this, you know. It's part of the city charter. So if there were going to be a change in terms of Prosper Portland's independence, it would have to come up for a vote, you know, by the public, and would be part of a charter amendment. And so it's not an easy thing to adjust that. And it was designed for a variety of reasons that still, I think, carry some weight, namely independence and kind of a lesser political influence over some kinds of decisions that are made. So, so, you know, we'll, we'll see. That's the short answer.
I would just add, because I want to lift up kind of Allison and others on the Equity Policy and Communications Team have done a lot of research about best practices in other cities, and we feel like it's important for us to situate kind of Portland's work also on a national stage and identify what's working, what's not working with other structures nationally. And you'll see that there are public-private kind of organizations that have arms-length relationships, so clearly kind of accountability back to council, but arms-length relationship with their city entity in other cities, whether that's Boston or New York or other major cities in the US.
Now, it'd be interesting to hear what the peer review, if you call it that, results. And thank you.
Mentioned, Chair Cruz, you have six new TIFF districts that you approved this past year. And we see the first budgeted funds for these districts in the budget that we're reviewing and you're adopting. Can you tell us more about the plans for these districts? Do you have examples of projects that you can share at this time, and when the public can expect to see work being done in these new districts?
Thank you for that question. And Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley is going to answer that question, I hope, if she can, if she can hear us.
I can hear you, and I'm gonna try. And thank you for the question. Really appreciate it. And thank you all for being here today. The first year of the six new TIFF districts will be dedicated to establishing community committees to help co-create the action plans that will guide investments over the next five years in each district in the Central City after a public application process, co-sponsored with the Portland Housing Bureau. We have convened three ad hoc working groups for each district. The charge of the working groups will be informed, will be to inform action plan investment priorities and recommend an ongoing long-term governance structure for oversight and reporting on action plan TIFF investments. In East Portland, applications for the 82nd Avenue area, Sumner Park Rose, Argay, Columbia Corridor, and East 205 TIFF District Community Leadership Committees were opened through this past Monday, June 16. The implementation of the new TIFF districts will start with the formation of community leadership committees, groups of community members with lived and professional experience, as well as connections to a specific district, who will guide implementation. Each district will have a dedicated City Council confirmed that will co-create a five-year action plan for their respective district in partnership with Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau. The action plans for all these districts must conform to each TIFF plan and will be brought forth to the Prosper Board and City Council for adoption in the first half of 2026. Limited first-year resources will be allocated in each district to fund engagement activities and staffing between Prosper Portland and BHP, Portland Housing, via the housing set aside.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I did get one of your postcards in the mail about.
Well, then we're doing our job. Well, staff's doing their job.
So when, when you're forming these districts, or did form these districts, did you get pushback from overlapping taxing districts about the formation and the tax increment loss that they might?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we actually, we had at the table with us both Multnomah County as well as our educational taxing jurisdictions. And kind of particularly when you get out into East Portland, it actually overlaps with three distinct school districts. So the way that we did it is we had a broader steering committee across all of our East Portland work, kind of the MESD participated in that. And then we actually had the superintendents for, for Park Rose and then for David Douglas participate in working groups that literally were the entities who took a vote and recommended whether to proceed because it was an exploration process only. We didn't kind of walk into the exploration process with a predetermined outcome. So they were part of that discussion. They were at the table. They were kind of, they voted. I think we did a lot of analysis with them. Kudos to kind of Tony and our finance team around the financial implications for both the county as well as the school districts. I think both felt comfortable enough that the county commission as a whole actually voted in support of the proposals that went forward before council in the fall for approval, as did the school districts. So we had the, we had kind of support from each of the school districts as well.
That's great. In those, in those conversations, I'm sure you talk about the long-term versus, benefits versus the short-term costs of it. Is that something that you've tracked over the years from your other districts? And is that something that you share with the general public? And if so, where?
Yeah, it's a good question. So there are a couple of documents and reports that I would collectively point the group to. One is Echo Northwest actually did a look back. It's kind of a 20-year look back that I think we may have discussed with this group last year, because before we dove into looking at new TIFF districts, we wanted to understand the impacts. And it's a kind of, it's a quantitative analysis, looking back at TIFF districts in the past, what were the outcomes, kind of what were the commitments and the obligations of the TIFF plans. So I would point you to that report, or we're happy to send it out to you. And then the other one that I would point to is our Equity Policy and Communications Team on an annual basis is issuing what we called last year, the State of the Portland Economy Report. And so that provides a lot of good information about the outcomes in each of the TIFF districts, where our investments went. You can actually see a line item by line item basis where our grants and our loans were placed, kind of, and outcomes based on those investments that came from the TIFF districts.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, but I'm waiting for my microphone to work. Is it working now? Okay. We've heard some community concerns about. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We've heard some community concerns that improvements in the TIFF districts may come at the expense of development in non-TIF areas. How do you ensure net overall benefit to the city from the use of TIFFs?
Okay, I'll take a stab at this one, too. But I, I think also, we heard, I think those are not singular concerns. We heard others. And I think there's a lot of conversation about the importance of sequency of investment to make sure that we are both stabilizing and then focused on inclusive growth. And that was one of the major kind of observations and lessons learned off of the Echo Northwest report, and something that I would say we have internalized to our work over the past 10-plus years, if we've, as we've really kind of focused on making sure that everybody has access to equitable outcomes. I think it's a great question. The, what I would say, the way that showed up in conversations when we were talking about TIFF exploration was really about making sure that TIFF doesn't start to stand in lieu of other investments, particularly in things like sidewalks or safe crossings or parks that, that can be invested otherwise by other entities within the city, is making sure that the investments that are in the TIFF districts are really focused on the things that the community wants to prioritize relative to what kind of other city partners or kind of other city needs are within that district, which then starts to use TIFF for other purposes. But we really heard more about be intentional about the TIFF investments within the district to make sure that you're stabilizing first and then focused on inclusive growth and make sure that they don't replace other city investments so that the city can kind of disinvest from the area, particularly around infrastructure needs.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the other, I think the other addition, so we, we did hear some of that feedback when I first started, it was my third meeting when we adopted the TIFF districts. So, but we did have some public comment come in. And one of the things that was very helpful for me was in that State of the Economy Report, when it looks back, it, there's a spillover effect of the areas that the TIFF districts touch. So if you look at the Echo Northwest report and that State of Economy report, you can see that once that there's the development in certain areas, that there is a little bit of a spillover into the other areas that are surrounding that. And looking at the map of the TIFF districts, I'm using my hands because they're all over the city. And so that also was sort of, they're placed in different parts of the city. So that, that spillover, maybe not for miles and miles across the city, but will be all over the city as well. And I think my hope is that it not only drives investment in the TIFF, but it actually can drive some of the private sector and other additional investment in the areas surrounding.
So with your interactions with the Portland City Council, these TIFF districts were formed, I believe, by the old City Council in October or November. Then the city itself declared that it had a very large general fund gap. These TIFF districts will affect that. And I'm curious if you've had any discussions with the city itself around, you know, the benefits that these TIFF districts, particularly the ones that are maybe closer to downtown, might bring as opposed to the foregone revenue to their general fund. And if I could just add a little more to that, are you concerned about the lack of growth in assessed value in the newer TIFF districts that are really more centrally located here in the core?
Okay.
All right, that's the long question.
No, I think we, it was, on the technical side, one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that Multnomah County didn't have different kind of forecasting than we were using as part of the TIFF plan. So we are very, very conservative, I would say, about how we forecasted the maximum indebtedness for each of the TIFF districts. And we worked really, our finance team worked very, very closely with Multnomah County to make sure that kind of their projections aligned with our projections is the first thing that I was just gonna add. Because we agree, I think it's particularly for the Central City, we've heard loud and clear that stabilizing commercial asset value that is driving some of the losses to availability of general fund, but also to like impacting social services for the county is very real right now. And we anticipate that's going to come up as a priority, particularly for the Central City TIFF districts.
I think just, you know, a more general, big-picture observation would be that, you know, politically, I think there's obviously a lot of interest in seeing the Central City come back, which of course will improve revenues overall eventually for the city. So I think folks are thinking, you know, at least some folks are thinking that these are wise investments to make right now, because eventually they'll improve the tax base. And that's what we all want. You know, we want more people downtown. We want more activity. We want more revenue. And you have, sometimes you have to invest in order to do that, so.
That issue you raised about the concern around kind of other city agencies divesting from TIFF districts, because the TIFF district can provide that, how are you, how are you navigating that? Or what's the plan to navigate that, especially in the, in the wake of the kind of big revenue deficits, big budget cuts in those other city agencies? And I would understand if you don't necessarily have a concrete plan yet. But I'm just curious that, that seems like a, I could see any City Council member or any agency saying, oh, it's a TIFF district. They can, we can, we can supplant, you know, we can deal with that deficit here with that. It seems like, you know, an easy fix that some people might approach with.
Well, I would just say, we've already, we've seen a little bit of that already, most notably in the negotiations over the recent budget. And, you know, I think, again, it's a trade-off and balance between what you do now versus what you do over the long term. And when you draw money out of the Strategic Investment Fund, for example, to be spent on more short-term needs and operational needs, those are funds that you can't use to invest for later growth and development, which we have to have, again, to improve the tax base. So it's a, you know, it's a lot of negotiation and push and pull politically at the moment, I would say. And it's not clear how it'll all come out either, because, you know, the political winds change pretty quickly, and we have all new people on City Council, so.
I do think it is one of the benefits of having the TIFF districts in various parts of the city. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe bring this closer? Does that work better? Okay. Now I'm shouting at people. I feel like I'm shouting at you, but, okay, good. So I think one of the benefits of having the TIFF districts throughout the city is that they are touching every political part of the current City Council's district makeup. And so each of them, I think, have an investment. Each district should have an investment in the development and growth of our city that is equitable and meaningful for those districts. I think sort of shifting money around to sort of under-invest in some areas or over-invest in others or backfill in other areas, it's sort of the nature of government. You're a budget committee. You understand that. But I don't think that that's the intention of the political will of the city or of the mayor. I think, I think that we can all focus on our city as a whole and how we're developing and growing together. And I hope that the City Council, and I think, you know, that their vision will be to do that. I think, and these, remember, these are over a 20-year time period. And so I don't think that you can pull, because of the districting of the city, I think it will be very, very hard to pull resources out of one particular area to invest in another, which I think has, the city has been able to do historically because we didn't have a districted City Council.
A good, it's a good segue, I think, to our next question. We understand that some staff were backfilled using planned investment returns from the Strategic Investment Fund. What's your view on the long-term viability of, of this strategy for preserving staff and other operational expenditures? What's your plan if the loan activity is not sufficient to generate the needed investment returns in future years?
I mean, what I would say is I'm, I'm decently nervous about the strategy long-term, about the impact of using CIF to backfill positions. I think Tavo just hinted at that when he, we sort of were like, you know, you have a short-term view and a long-term view. And I think when you think about the CIF fund, it's about having a long-term vision. The previous City Council did give guidance that is included direction to implement funding sources in addition to the general fund. And the Strategic Investment Fund is definitely part of that. You know, I think the CIF fund was created to provide a long-term citywide revolving, revolving fund for small business and commercial property lending and real estate investments aligned with Advanced Portland and our overall city goals and programming. I think the general fund program in the City Council, the governor and the mayor's goals, economic, I think Lisa talked a little bit about it in her opening remarks about the Governor's Central City Plan. All of that, I think, is caught up in the CIF conversation. Additionally, Prosper Portland's Financial Sustainability Plan identified interest earnings and any net operating income as resources to support operations required to deliver CIF programs and stable. SIFT programs and stabilize the overall agency's operations. So freeing up dollars in the general fund until new TIF districts have more financial capacity. So the level of operating support will depend on the performance of the loans and the related interest earnings and other investments. So for the 25-26 approved budget, as an estimated capacity of approximately 1.8 million in operational support, which includes the backfill of positions, as you mentioned, with the reduction of general fund resources. And so it will be unsustainable to sort of use SIFT to backfill additional positions on a regular and ongoing basis. And the intention was for SIFT to return an additional $3 million per year to the operating budget in 2030 to help fund and stabilize operations. The catch to that is that it will require the full investment of about $15 million in SIFT resources, generating an estimated 7% cash-on-cash annual return. So in the long term, if we continue to spend down the SIFT investments, we could jeopardize our future investments.
Alison. So along the same lines with the Strategic Investment Fund, but on the loan side, we can imagine that loans to small and emerging businesses come with risk. How do you determine loan terms and how do you mitigate that risk with those loan terms?
Sure, I'll grab this one. So financial investments that are made using SIFT resources are guided by the agency's board-adopted financial investment policy and program guidelines approved at public Board of Commissioner meetings. The loan programs specific to SIFT resources include the Small Business Loan Program and the Commercial Property Redevelopment Loan Program. All loans are underwritten in accordance with program guidelines that are developed in partnership with input from community members. Overall underwriting process, as one would expect, includes reviewing the actual and proposed and projected, sorry, cash flows, collateral, and overall strength of the borrower. The overall risk will determine the interest rate. Generally, a higher-risk, higher-impact loans are more common in TIF districts, as we've discussed, where there's greater levels of public policy goals that are being pursued. SIFT loans maintain strong impact or public benefit, but generally will sustain loans with higher levels of financial return. The Financial Investment Policy establishes an internal loan committee, the Committee Accountability of Finance and Equity, otherwise known as CAFE, which is responsible for reviewing loans underwritten by the lending team and making recommendations to the executive director for approval if no guideline exceptions are involved. Loans that do have exceptions to program guidelines and are recommended by CAFE are then forwarded to the Prosper Portland Board for public discussion and board approval.
Just as a follow-up, it sounds like there's a range of different types of loans and different categories. But would you say, is there an average size of a loan from the fund? Like, what's the high and low in terms of sort of the range that you're looking at when you lend out?
Sure. So the average is around $300,000. The range is anywhere from 25 to 3 million, where we see the majority of the small business loans actually being less than $100,000. The larger ones are primarily focused around real estate development, commercial properties loans. So as an example, a $3 million loan for the Flock Food Hall resulted in opportunities for multiple food carts and businesses and the reactivation of Portland's downtown. But SIFT also funds commercial property loans for middle-income housing, such as the loan for the Short Stack Mississippi Project.
I have a follow-up to that. So we get the advantage of talking to lots of different agencies. We talked to East, East Multnomah also has kind of an investment fund. There's for land purchases and easements and things. And it's a big amount of money, just like your Strategic Investment Fund, right? It's 36 million right now. It sounds like the goal is to hit 50 million. Is there, is there an amount that is, feels like is the right feasible amount of money in that fund, kind of short-term, long-term? Just in the, you know, I think for the public, seeing like a big bank account, right? Like a big pot of money sitting there. And I think it's probably what the city council, as they're coming up to speed sees too. Is there, you know, what's the argument for the amount of money in it? I think that's where our question was coming from too. Like, the average size is big, right? $300,000, but does that, where does it, where are we at? What would you tell the public about, like, well, this is the right amount of money or actually we need more or we can do with less or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a pass at this and hand it over. So I, you know, I think investment via programs like this, I think for me, it's the research and development engine of our city. And as I think about sort of the, sort of the tension between spending on short-term goals versus long-term goals, I think there's a tension to want to spend on the immediate problems. However, I would think that, you know, that short-term thinking gets us into longer-term trouble. And it's, you know, think of the analogy of a marshmallow test for the city. Think of it as organizations that, you know, invest in research and development in downturn economic environments are the ones that are set up for longer-term success. I see programs like this as the R&amp;D engine of our city. If we draw against it in the short term, we are setting ourselves up for longer-term failure. So I don't know what the exact number is that balances the short and the long term. I just think that we should resist the temptation to draw down against us at the expense of having a conversation two, three years, four years from now where we're in a much larger shortfall because of our inability to plan for the future growth that we need to sustain development of our city.
Yeah, I don't know that I have much more to add. I think our priority is really focused on making sure that it's a revolving kind of revenue stream. And that's the idea of having it as kind of resources to place into small business loans is ultimately then kind of, that principle is coming back and we can invest it into the next business over a 10-year cycle. And we just can continue that loop. I think we've certainly looked at our spending patterns just to understand what the investment demand is out in the community because we don't want to compete with the private sector. There's, we're wanting to make sure we're providing access to capital to projects and partners who can't otherwise access capital. And so we're looking at those trends of just how much demand. And quite honestly, how much can our staffing capacity do we have to service that demand?
So there's been some reporting recently on the, and forgive me, the shoe and apparel for Old Town. And I recall in the article, and please forgive me if I have my facts wrong, that it was an amount that was higher than your guidelines. It was for a term that was longer than for your guidelines. And it was for a interest rate that was lower than your guidelines. So was there flexibility within your lending guidelines that allowed you to make that decision? And what gave you confidence to do that? Did I get that right before I said, yeah?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, generally speaking, there is some flexibility in our guidelines and that's why that particular loan came to the board. If it's within guidelines and it's within a lesser dollar amount, then it's delegated essentially to staff. So that's part of why I think it kind of rose up in the public consciousness. But, but that was, that was a project that we see as a kind of an anchor for Old Town and an opportunity to activate an area that has been overlooked and has been, you know, languishing for a long time. So, so there were just a lot of, a lot of factors. And I would encourage you to take a look at the, and we can provide these materials too, from our board meeting that dealt with that. There were, you know, the folks who were involved with it are, you know, very competent and experienced in the footwear industry. There's a lot of community support for the project. Hopefully, it will be a very successful incubator, which will then kind of spread activity among some other entrepreneurs in the area. So, so this is the kind of thing that, you know, the public sector, or excuse me, the private sector wouldn't do this deal, right? US Bank, Bank of America would not step in and do this. But this is the kind of thing that Prosper Portland has really set up to do, to spur economic growth in areas that are underserved. So would you want to add anything, maybe, Lisa?
I'll just, so I think in the guidelines, it actually speaks to what we call high-impact projects. And I just want to honor, we very much focus within tax agreement finance areas. And so that was an investment that was aligned with the Old Town Action Plan. So in Old Town, the community has identified key priorities that include activating vacant buildings and supporting small businesses. And so we're going to look for that alignment with what the community's priorities are and then come to the board for authorization for any exception to the guidelines. But the ability to kind of provide exceptions is allowable within the guidelines. It just takes a very particular conversation with the board and making sure that it's very, in very clear alignment with the community's priorities.
I also, go ahead.
I was just going to add, at that board meeting, we also approved several other, a couple other loans in the two board meetings that were also outside of the guidelines. They just didn't get, I don't know, the justice and the media that they deserve because I actually think that they're incredible projects. So, you know, Homies Coffee Shop, which was approved, and we lowered their interest rate, that was approved at additional board meeting. We also approved an investment in new green technology that was also outside of the guidelines. It would be awesome. Anybody who's listening would like to write an article about that, it'd be awesome.
Just, one other, just to kind of understate this, like, this is the Economic Development Agency of the City of Portland. And we need to take appropriate risk in order to set our city up for success. As I think about the fact that apparel and outdoor is one of the traded sectors of our region, and I lament the fact that we don't have a strong apparel and outdoor presence in the central city. Like, this is an opportunity to correct that and to drive people into our downtown, which benefits all the restaurants and all the areas that are around it, and to fix our empty streets. Like, the solution to a number of the problems that our city faces is creating more jobs. And I think this is an opportunity to do that. And I agree with my fellow commissioner that certain aspects of this were reported and others not. I think time will tell on the success of a program like this, but this is exactly what this agency is set up to do.
Well, we wish you the best of success with that and we look forward to asking about it next year.
Yeah, please, please do. We like to report on success stories too. You know, we, I'll just, I'll just note, you know, we took some heat for the, for the loan to the Flock Food Court, for example. And if folks have ever walked by there since that was set up, it's quite active and busy and seems to be very appreciated by the folks that do come downtown to work. And so, you know, looking at that at the outset, folks thought, well, that may not be the best, you know, deal. But again, it was something that we did strategically. It was not a deal that a commercial bank would take on, but it was a deal that kind of made sense from an economic development standpoint. So we have to put on that separate hat, so.
Building on the job creation theme, one of the Advance Prosper aims is to connect Portlanders with high-quality jobs in future-ready sectors. Can you tell us more about the programs? What sectors and kinds of jobs you focused on? And what role does Prosper play in this work?
So, yeah, the Advance Portland Strategy identifies five key industry clusters that are competitive for Portland's economy: athletic and outdoor, green cities, climate technology, metals and machinery, technology and media, and food and beverage. And the business advancement team supports those by connecting Portland businesses to the resources they need to expand and grow jobs. And last year, Prosper implemented job creating program activities that include finalized and updated the cluster action plan. So each of those clusters have an action plan now. They completed the trade strategy to guide the city's actions in advancing trade initiatives and targeting global markets. They continue to work of the business retention core team in collaboration with elected offices, providing ongoing outreach to retain key employers in the city on those sectors. They expanded the Portland's Means Progress Supplier Diversity Coalition to include major employers in the region, with more than $495 million spent by POC-owned businesses since the launch of Portland's Means Progress. They expanded targeted scale-up capital through Prosper Portland's lending from the Strategic Investment Fund, the SIFT, which we just talked about. So including loans to Javelina, which I mentioned when we talked about the sports bra. So congratulations on their expansion to other cities. Pan's Mushroom Jerky and Off Connect. And they implemented a food and beverage manufacturing commercialization support in partnership with the Food Innovation Center. And they, we've additionally pursued the following activities to connect Portlanders to high-quality jobs. So I'm going to go through a couple of the numbers. But in partnership with Work Systems, we helped to deliver high-quality workforce development training and coaching toward career-track jobs. That served 686 adults, 491 youth, with 58% of adult participants advancing in employment as a result for 2023-24. In addition, 265 participants received services through the Construction Career Training Program funded by the Community Opportunity Enhancement Programs. Co-op of those participants served 86% identify as people of color and 30% identify as women or gender expansive, provided workforce navigation services through community partners to over 460 individuals. Of those participants, 78% identify as people of color. And since the launch of the Portland Means Progress Initiative in 2019, 1,290 interns have been hosted at Portland Means Progress's businesses. And we've advancing the Portland Industrial Land Study, so Brownfield Study and Economic Opportunity Study in partnership with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to evaluate industrial land capacity for development and job creation, focusing on investments on business growth in underserved areas through OMEP and the Enterprise Zone Resources. We've invested in Green Cities workforce, including training partnerships with PSEF, Workforce Development Program, the Oregon Clean Energy Workforce Coalition, and the Mass Timber Coalition, shout-out to our airport. Implementation ongoing for other projects and priorities. And the manufacturing employers are being convened through Work Systems, Inc., NextGen, and Cascadian Manufacturing Network to inform industry-led workforce programming. So that's a lot of things, but I just want to say that we were able to hear from some of the participants in that program here at our board and who've been served. And that's really where the rubber meets the road, is like the people who are getting served in these programs. And a woman who was a refugee from Ukraine, who has come here, who's training to get her CDL, told a really meaningful story about being involved in the Work Systems Program to advance her career and also to just establish herself as a new immigrant here. And that was incredibly powerful. Also, I got to participate. I was lucky, I went to the Broadway Corridor Lobby Day and a Broadway Corridor Tour with Noah Kohn from Constructing Hope, who runs programs for pre-apprenticeships and training and is a key partner on many of our projects. And so these are the, the sort of day-to-day impacts that you see from these levels of investments in the programs that the city has been, and Prosper has been running.
And as Hominy mentioned, we've been talking to everybody about collaboration, sort of institutional collaboration, collaboration across jurisdictions, that kind of thing. So in the workforce development work, do you have explicit relationships with, you know, school districts, community colleges? I mean, how does collaboration play into this work?
Well, I can take a quick stat. I mean, I think the example, the example I gave of Noah is a really great example of that collaboration. I know that they also did some of the work on the airport and the Port of Portland. And sort of having that cross-sector collaboration where folks can move from project to project throughout the sort of, as we sort of develop different projects in our city is really critical. I think, Lisa, do you want to talk about the collaboration with Work Systems?
I think much of our, I want to lift up that much of this work is done directly and the programs are provided directly, particularly around workforce development, are provided by Work Systems that we provide kind of city funding through and then we partner with them on key initiatives, particularly tied to our cluster industries and what they're seeing as their workforce needs. I would also highlight, though, we are in conversations with folks like the port about, as they're thinking about their programming at T2, which is focused on cross-laminated timber. And you have literally kind of blocks away, Broadway Corridor, we have literally kind of sat with them and thought about, through our partnerships with folks like Oregon Tradeswomen and Constructing Hope, how are we identifying opportunities, like on projects and on-site, but also through a pipeline of different industry opportunities that will happen with modular construction or innovative, innovative construction means?
I mentioned this at the port hearing, I'm going to say it again here. The Portland Public Schools passed the modernization bond. At least one of the high schools that they're talking about building is likely going to be using the laminated wood. It would be wonderful to see all these different agencies working together to maximize the efficiency of that and the impact. And one last question. So everybody's hearing rumblings about possible recession and the impact of tariffs. You mentioned that trade has been a big item. So what impact do you think an economic downturn would have on your job So, what impact do you think an economic downturn would have on your job development work?
I mean, I think I, I'd just sort of like to just say, obviously, none of us hope for an economic downturn or recession. Like, the impact of that on families and businesses is just devastating. And so, I think the first thing is that Prosper would need to use the programs that we have and the tools in a really flexible way to keep up with the changing market conditions. Maybe we'll have a boom. And we would need to really focus our resources in the areas where they can make the biggest impact to support the goals of Advanced Portland. So, we know that recessions don't impact industry uniformly, that they can have, and the tariffs or trade war, whichever you would like to call them, at any given day is, is the same. So, the board would need to take a really nuanced approach. Like, we would need to think about what's happening in the market and how do we focus on our local economy on an industry-by-industry basis? And then we need to make sure that we continue to serve as many individuals as possible, receiving education and training for the career pathways that are available, especially during a recession, so that we're prepared to come out of it and move out of it, where we're not leaving people behind. And we definitely will need to help people keep finding jobs and promoting Portland to companies that are growing and looking to move and helping really support small businesses, right? A lot of companies have come out of large companies when they've had layoffs. We've seen a boost of the small-traded sector businesses or spinoffs have launched by employees who were laid off from large companies. And that, if there are layoffs, when a company shuts down or plans to lay off workers, we have a plan. You know, we need to work on job training partners to help those workers learn their skills and find new jobs. We look at the skills those workers have and use that information to attract businesses to the area. And we offer several programs to help new business owners by connecting them to funding resources. And let's all hope we never have to use all of those tools.
I believe it's about 40% of the TIF dollars go to the Portland Housing Bureau. Is that the right number? Forty percent, okay. We were curious about your, the board's relationship, as well as the staff's relationship with the Portland Housing Bureau. What input does your agency have when it comes to housing development that's using TIF dollars within the urban renewal districts in terms of what, what role do you have relative to what the Housing Bureau does?
I'll take this one. So, since the Portland Housing Bureau was created in 2009, Prosper enters into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, approved by the board and the city administrator, the Prosper Board and the city administrator. The IGA identifies the total housing set-aside TIF resources that PHB can invoice from Prosper based on our respective adopted budgets. All housing and funding decisions are made by PHB in consultation with the appropriate city decision-makers. On specific mixed-use or mixed-income projects, the agreement also identifies the roles and responsibilities of each agency. A current example is the Williams and Russell Project in the Interstate TIF District, where the IGA specifies that Prosper's role and investment in the pre-development and site preparation activities were partially funded by the housing set-aside. So, we oversaw that work, and it was funded through the housing set-aside, given that there was going to be affordable housing development on the site, which is why it was under the purview of PHB. Future vertical development will also be jointly funded with Portland, Prosper Portland's Interstate TIF Resources invested in a black business hub and PHB Interstate TIF Housing Set-Aside Resources invested in the affordable multifamily rental housing and homeownership component of the project. In 2024, City Council directed the city administrator, with the support of PHB and in collaboration with Prosper's leadership, to conduct a thorough review of the set-aside policy, which I'm sure you are aware of, and to return to City Council with a recommendation amending the set-aside policy by November 30th, 2026. And to provide an overview of the annual set-aside allocations across all of the districts as part of their annual budget presentation to City Council, starting in fiscal year 2526. The current set-aside policy sets an aggregate citywide target of 45% of investments within the active TIF districts.
Excuse me. It would really be nice if you guys could speak up. We're having a hard time hearing you. And I've asked this several times. Could you please speak into the mic?
Yes, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can't hear what you just said.
Do you want me to repeat it?
That would be great.
Okay. So, since the Portland Housing Bureau was created in 2009, Prosper entered into an annual intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, approved by the Prosper Board and the city administrator. The IGA identifies the total housing set-aside TIF resources, and PHB invoices Prosper Portland based on our respective adopted budgets. All housing policy and funding decisions are made by PHB in consultation with the appropriate city decision-makers. On specific mixed-use or mixed-income projects, the agreement also identifies the roles and responsibilities of each city agency. A current example is the Williams and Russell Project in the Interstate TIF District, where the IGA specifies Prosper's role and investment in pre-development and site preparation activities, which are partially funded by the housing set-aside, given that there's affordable housing on a portion of the site. Future vertical development will also be jointly funded with Prosper Portland Interstate TIF Resources invested in a black business hub and PHB Interstate TIF Housing Set-Aside Resources invested in affordable multifamily rental housing and homeownership components of the project. In 2024, City Council directed the city administrator, with the support of PHB and in collaboration with Prosper leadership, to conduct a thorough review of the set-aside policy and to return to City Council with any recommended amendments by November 30th, 26. And to also provide an overview of annual set-aside allocations across all districts as part of their annual budget presentation to council, starting with fiscal year 2526. The current set-aside policy sets an aggregate citywide target of 45% of investments within active TIF districts.
Can I ask one que, so if I understand correctly, Prosper works as kind of a pass-through for, for housing-related resources? Are there any transaction costs related to that?
And I want to clarify, we, we are pass-through for affordable housing for PHB, for the programs that they oversee.
Right. So, are there any, are there any costs, administrative costs related to that?
Good afternoon. Tony Barnes, CFO. That's correct. There's some monthly administrative cost of processing the invoice and coordinating with PHB and reviewing projects. But largely, that's covered by that 4% of TIF resources that covers both administration of that work as well as all debt administration that Prosper Portland's responsible for that PHB does not do. So, it's, it's covered.
Okay.
And did we hear correctly, on some projects where it might be mixed-use, you would leverage some of Prosper Portland's resources as part of a larger project, like the Williams Project?
Correct.
So, that happens on a periodic basis, too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We've also heard about conversations and sort of concepts of plans for converting office buildings into residences. Is this something that Prosper would have a hand in? And is the, my understanding, I am, you know, this is received wisdom. My understanding is that those conversions are relatively quite expensive. So, is that the, the best use for limited resources related to housing?
Yes, and so, as I think most of us know, over the last five to six years, there's been a huge amount of vacancy in office buildings, not just in Portland, but across the US. So, cities across the US have been endeavoring to figure out how to recycle these underutilized assets. And in Portland, our central city was particularly hit hard by vacancy. And so, that's creating challenges in downtown and Old Town and other commercial sub-areas because of the imbalance of uses. It's impacting the kind of environment of those areas, in addition to just general traffic, which then supports small businesses and other things that exist there. So, as part of, as part of Advanced Portland, the city's plan for inclusive economic growth, it recommended a policy consideration for the central city to include incentives to support the conversion of vacant commercial space to residential conversions. An incentive program to convert offices into residential spaces is needed to facilitate meaningful adaptive reuse, especially considering the limited number of buildings that actually meet the conversion program requirements. So, I think that kind of addresses your question around, is this going to be a widespread, subsidized effort? The answer is no, just as a practical matter, not many buildings will qualify for conversion. In response to these challenges, Prosper is partnering, partnering with Portland Clean Energy Fund within the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to pilot an initiative to convert vacant office space to residential uses. Office-to-residential conversions have a direct nexus with greenhouse gas reduction because of the reuse of the existing building. New building construction has significant carbon emissions impacts with approximately 40% of impacts generated during construction and production of a new building. So, there's the financial expense and also the environmental upside of using, reusing underutilized office buildings. Partnering with PSEF, Prosper is applying a portion of the resources received under our intergovernmental agreement toward the Climate Investment Plan Strategic Priority Number 14. Under the pilot, PSEF and Prosper are working with Oregon DEQ, who's providing technical support. Pilot eligibility and guidelines include the following: projects of 20 units or more renting at 60% to 120% AMI for 10 years, $60,000 per unit for office-to-residential conversions, and $25,000 per unit for efficient equipment and appliance upgrades to make them more energy-efficient, including HVAC heating and cooling, hot water heating, et cetera. Conditional loan forgiveness over a 10-year period, and then access to detailed project data to create kind of precedent and a playbook for folks who want to do conversions in the future and will hopefully make the process less expensive and less risky for those people. Additional benefits of the pilot include workforce and contractor development opportunities, producing middle-income housing in areas with an imbalance of land uses post-pandemic, and creating density in areas with strong transit-oriented infrastructure. And it also will help stabilize property tax and revenue base for local government, going back to the earlier question. So, this is not the solution for our housing crisis or for reusing all of our office buildings, but I think there's an opportunity here to strategically implement the conversions to activate critical areas of our city and hopefully also preserve some buildings that help build character in the city as well.
So, just to clarify, so the affordable housing component would only be guaranteed for 10 years?
Currently, the threshold is for a minimum of 10 years for, and this is for, I think, really middle-income housing, because it's 60% to 120% AMI, average median income.
Okay, and after that, it would probably convert to market value?
Correct.
Would depend on the contract, right?
Yes.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna request just the written response to our question about Broadway Corridor, and we can follow up afterwards for that. So, we just want to thank everyone today for the conversation. I know we asked lots of follow-up questions, so we just really appreciate your candor and your thoughtfulness as we all navigate kind of challenging times. So, with that, we have a little business to conduct. So, I will close our hearing and open a regular business meeting of the TSCC, the third official meeting already in the last hour and a half here. Commissioners, do you have any additional comments on the Prosper Portland budget? Great. Allegra, can you please share the staff recommendations for certification?
Yes, I would be happy to. And first, I would like to say a thank you to the Prosper Portland Budget and Finance Staff. We so appreciate their partnership throughout the year. They're always so quick to answer questions and to brainstorm with us on those tricky budget law questions. We, as staff, found the budget estimates to be reasonable for the purposes stated and in substantial compliance with budget law. Staff suggests no recommendations or objections to the fiscal year 2526 approved budget.
Great. Commissioners, may I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended?
I will. Go ahead, read it.
All right.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The Prosper Portland budget is so certified by TSCC. Allegra follows up very shortly with our signed certification letter, so you can complete your budget adoption processes, and that will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, so much. We really appreciate you letting us have some time today.
Great, well, thank you so much for coming. It's a pleasure to see you and appreciate your questions and the back and forth. It was very helpful, so. Back to another meeting. All right, so the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now reconvened, and we will just carry on. So, item seven is a consent agenda item. Okay, great, thank you. Consent agenda item is item seven. This is an action item authorizing a short-term interfund operating loans, resolution number 7609. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7609?
I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So, next up, we move to our regular agenda, and this is item eight. This is an action item, adopting the annual budget of Prosper Portland for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and making appropriations. And Tony Barnes, Chief Financial Officer for Prosper Portland, will present. Welcome, Tony.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO and interim director. Please hop on. Good afternoon. I'll be presenting today's action, the adoption of the fiscal year 2526 budget. As background, next slide, please. As background, the board, as the governing body of Prosper Portland, may adopt the budget following approval of the Budget Committee, which is City Council, a hearing conducted by the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission, which just took place, and certification of the approved budget by the TSCC. The board may make any change to the budget, as long as any fund appropriations are not increased by more than 10%. So, I'll recap several actions through the budget process, since the draft was, draft budget was previewed with you in January, and then we'll go over next steps. Next slide, please. So, the changes since proposed budget, to recap, the recommended budget is substantially consistent with the projects, programs, and operations as discussed in the draft budget previewed in January. The mayor's proposed budget included our recommended reductions to reach the initial general fund targeted reduction, which included a reduction of the Venture Portland Contract, internalizing some of the business district grant functions, moving some general fund staffing to the Strategic Investment Fund, and $200,000 reductions to workforce and inclusive business resource network contracts. The mayor's proposed budget also reduced our budget an additional $200,000, also replaced $2 million in ongoing funds with one-time funding, and that will be putting our budget at a lower starting place in the fiscal year 2627 budget process for general fund resources. The council-approved budget on May 21st ended up maintaining the mayor's proposed general fund budget while adding $3 million in one-time funding from the Strategic Investment Fund investments that I'll touch upon in the next slides. And we'll keep it up this slide for the next couple points as background and context on how the city's general fund contribution has evolved over the last several years. The blue illustrates ongoing funding, funding that's automatically added at the beginning of the budget process for consideration by council. The green represents one-time resources, which are more likely to vary from year to year based on specific initiatives or priorities. Ongoing funding remaining, remained at the $6 million-plus level until adoption of the current 2425 budget, where council included a portion of the returning tax increment coming back to the city and incorporated that into Prosper's general fund allocation, therefore, the increase between fiscal year 2324 and 2425. This added about $7.5 million to general fund resources to overall increase citywide funding for Prosper's operations and programming. One-time funding has varied over time, with large amounts in fiscal year 2122 and 2223 to support the repair and restore grant programs, as well as investments in specific initiatives throughout the city. Based on what council has approved with the reductions mentioned on the prior slide, the total general fund allocation will be will be $13.1 million, a net reduction of 12% overall. And $2 million, as I mentioned, are one-time and will, at this point in time, no longer be part of the base budget for fiscal year 2627 when we start that process. Next slide, please. This slide recaps the Strategic Investment Fund council changes in the approved budget as part of council budget approval. The $3 million allocation was $1 million for the James Beard Market, added grant funding, $1 million for repair/restore grant funding, $500,000 for workforce development funding, of which $200,000 restored one of the general fund reductions, and $450,000 for the Office of Film and Event Grants, and $50,000 for large event support. The amount allocated does not impact what was established in next year's budget or over the next couple years for current timing and programming of CIF placement. However, it will decrease the overall amount of lending and or investments that could have occurred over the next four years and provide overall less flexibility and capacity to respond to lending and access to capital needs if needed sooner. The amount is equivalent to providing 15 small business loans at $200,000 and ultimately foregoing a targeted return of about $200,000 annually. There are some near-term impacts as well related to the loss of interest on cash from holding that $3 million. So this slide illustrates what is currently in the budget right now for CIF funding in addition to what was originally programmed for CIF and some of the opportunity cost of that $3 million change. Next slide, please. Illustrate overall, the overall fund further, this slide shows next year's CIF approved budget and the following four-year forecast. The forecast includes total estimated resources available in cash plus existing loan and property income. New investments, which include programming for small businesses, commercial property, and potential real estate investments remain unchanged from the initial five-year forecast we shared at the beginning of the budget process. As these amounts are flexible, they can move forward or out as needed. So while the return target firm investments are shown here at the very bottom, it's not included in the resource forecast at this point in time. We won't be including those in the budget and forecasts or programming any return until those loans or other investments are actually made and can be projected. So right now, we just have that target return that would help the operating budget, and if there's any principal related to loans being made, we will, in the future, program those principal repayments in the forecast as well. But this illustrates, for the total budget for 2526, a $17 million budget, which started out, you know, at about $14 million before the council addition. Next slide, please. The next two slides summarize the budget as shown in Exhibit A at a very high level here, and some of the recommended changes, which are technical in nature. For resources, we are decreasing the beginning fund balance by $2.5 million to true up our estimated beginning fund balance. It starts next year. There's a small update to grant revenue based on the latest community development block grant resources that are received by the city and allocated to Prosper Portland for economic development. And transfers, transfers in and out increased $3 million. This is primarily due to an internal transfer to establish a new community, separate community grant and investment fund. We had some resources packaged together in a couple in one separate sub-fund. This action will separate some local contracts from our grant investments so we can account for those different types of activities separately. So we're transferring resources already in one fund to this new fund. So there's no programming or project changes, but it allows for better accounting between the two different types of activities, and therefore we're transferring funds from one to the other. Next slide, please. So for requirements in the expenditure side, we have the other side of that internal transfer, receiving the $3 million, but we also have several adjustments to true-up programming for the general fund, PSEF fund, Enterprise Zone Fund, and Community Development Block Grant Funds based on available resources. As part of these adjustments, there's also some staff reallocations. We're not recommending any change to the overall staffing budget, which was based on 105 positions since the beginning of this budget process, but how those costs are allocated between general fund, Strategic Investment Fund, Enterprise Zone Fund, and the PSEF fund. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates a current year budget correction that's relating to the beginning fund balance. We needed to add a mention about this in this presentation as our final budget revision for the current fiscal year on May 21 did not recognize the full amount of transfers going from Airport Way and South Park Blocks to districts that were closing out and into the Strategic Investment Fund. So we're recognizing that here and showing in our Exhibit A, the updated beginning fund balance for the Strategic Investment Fund does recognize those resources. So we're identifying that fix here, even though it's related to the current fiscal year budget. And the total amount of the transfer from those expiring districts was $340,000, coming in from Airport Way and South Park Blocks, which are closing out, and those resources are being brought into the forecast for CIF. Next slide, please, and I believe this is the final slide. Our final note here is the recommended adopted budget. That is in Exhibit A to the resolution, identifies several more, several routine annual contracts that the budget funds through the updated delegation of authority to the executive director as approved in Resolution 7576, where the executive director may enter into these contracts, since the contracts and their purpose have been identified in Exhibit A. So this slide identifies total intergovernmental agreements, amounts anticipated, as well as specific contracts that are funded by some of these contracts, by some of these agreements. And that includes the IGA with the City of Portland for General Fund and Recreational Cannabis Tax Funds, intergovernmental agreement with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to receive additional PSEF funds over five years, an IGA amendment with the City of Portland to administer the Community Opportunities and Enhancement Program, an IGA with the Portland Housing Bureau to administer Community Development Block Grant Economic Opportunity Initiative, and the housing set aside, the grant agreement with Work Systems, Inc., and grant agreements for the Community Workforce Navigation Program. So those are all identified in Exhibit A, and therefore, we'll review this again, but we don't believe we'll be bringing these forth as separate board actions in July or August to execute those. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to give major appreciations to everybody at Prosper Portland, all staff, for their work on the budget and providing exceptional support throughout the process. It's truly been an all-hands-on-deck year. Special thank you again to interim executive directors, Shef Lardy-Batine and Lisa Obwa, Shari Vickers, Andrew Fitzpatrick, Hope Whitney, all their incredible teams. Big thanks to Courtney Combe and Chan Say Lee on the budget team on helping develop, develop and deliver the budget. Much appreciation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Does anybody have any questions, comments? No? Nope. Serena or Felisa, do you have any que-- oh, excuse me, just Serena, sorry. Just Serena.
No, nothing for me.
Nothing. Okay, great. All right, then. Well, thank you, Tony. Really appreciate the explanation and appreciate all your great work, and thank you to the team. It was a challenging budget year, so, as we all know. So, so thanks very much for your great work. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the annual budget of Prosper Portland for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and making appropriations? That's resolution number 7610.
I move we adopt resolution number 7610.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, great. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next, we have item nine. This is an action item authorizing a predevelopment loan for the development of middle-income housing on parcel six within the Broadway Corridor. And this is report, excuse me, resolution number 7611. And Kay Little, Development Manager, and Sarah Harple, Project Manager, Senior Project Manager, excuse me, will present.
I've gotten older.
I don't see Kay. He's not, maybe it's online, okay?
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, interim Executive Director, our boss. I get to say that more once. My name is Sarah Harple, Senior Project Manager in our Development and Investment Department. I'm joined online by Kay Little, who is our Asset and Investment Manager, as well as Steph Condor, who is a Senior Vice President of Development with Related. Next slide, please. The item before you today is to authorize a predevelopment loan to Related for the development of middle-income housing on parcel six in the Broadway Corridor. I'm going to share a couple context-setting slides for folks who maybe have not been tracking this project as closely as many of you have been. First, the proposed investment aligns with the outcomes and objectives of Advance Portland, including unlocking or increasing production of middle-income housing in sub-districts of the central city in particular that have had an imbalance of job-to-housing mix, unlocking large-scale development sites and public-private partnerships, and also increasing job training and career pathways through our investments. The 14 acre former post office site sits at the heart of the Broadway Corridor, as shown here in orange. It has the potential for 4 million square feet of mixed-use, mixed-income development. I would also note that due to the history of the site in terms of industrial uses, including the post office and rail yards before that, as well as investments in affordable housing surrounding the site and in stabilizing a number of cultural anchor institutions in the district, this site is poised for accommodating a significant amount of growth within our central city in a manner that reduces the risk of displacement of the uses in and around this neighborhood, in contrasting if that growth was accommodated elsewhere within our city. Next slide, please. We've been at this a while, including many, many years before, which is shown on this slide, but I do think, I think of this kind of courage section of our work in three kind of chapters. The first was significant engagement and planning and design work to really define and set our North Star. We moved out of that work and into site preparation, kind of in the midst of the pandemic. So we transitioned out of that and really started into our horizontal work. So demolition, environmental remediation, off-site utilities to service the district, and if you've been by the site in the last couple weeks, starting to construct streets through the site. I'm very excited to be here and before you today, opening up hopefully a third chapter of our work, which really moves into the vertical development of the site with two proposed residential developments, one sponsored by the Portland Housing Bureau and one contemplated in the action before you today. Next slide, please. So you'll see in this diagram Northwest Johnson and Northwest Kearney are being constructed through the site, connecting east-west across the post office site. We also are just wrapping off off-site utility work necessary to service this, this district. The streets will be completed in late 2026. Those investments combined unlock about 70% of the site's development potential, shown here in orange. That includes the northern half of parcel four, what we call four A. Four A and four B are controlled by the Portland Housing Bureau, so they're moving forward with the development. I'll speak in a little bit more detail about in a second on parcel four A. The remaining parcels are under the guidance of our exclusive negotiating agreement with Related. As we've worked with them over the past few years, they've really focused in on parcel six as the first phase of development of their potential interest in the site. And so I'm going to run through a couple slides that really speak to, I think, the important synergy of four A and six coming together as we launch this new neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is a view of that new Northwest Johnson Street, which is really envisioned to be the kind of the heart, the main street of the district. So this is if you were standing at the EcoTrust Building, looking east to Union Station. This street's being constructed now with a lot of kind of special finishes. So you can imagine the connection from Jameson Square Park to Union Station will really feel like a special space with separate bike lanes, wide sidewalks, a number of special features, curbless sections of the street, really to kind of create the heart of the neighborhood. Looking at this image to the left, kind of in the foreground, to the left would be where parcel six sits, and then across the street would be parcel four A. I think this image also speaks to the importance of critical mass as a first phase of development and thinking about the activation, the activity we want to see along the street, and the importance of kind of, of launching that with a spectrum of housing affordability and with enough people on the street to really kind of maintain that momentum over time. Next slide, please. And then also, if this is an image, if you were standing at the current parking lot adjacent to the Pacific Northwest College of Art or PNCA, looking north into the site, you can see kind of in the middle of the site, structural element, which raises the open space in the green loop up to cross over the Broadway Bridge. Just adjacent, so just the immediate west of that kind of structural element is where the affordable housing project will sit, and then just diagonal to the northwest is where parcel six would sit. I think these two images also speak to these two parcels being two of the most significant and most important in the, in the heart of this district, being kind of at the heart of Maine and Maine in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So the two developments, again, as I mentioned, parcel four A is under the sponsorship or guidance of the Portland Housing Bureau. They selected Home Forward in partnership with the Urban League of Portland as the developers and owners of that site. They are proposing 230 units of affordable housing, affordable to residents earning between 30% and 60% AMI. They are anticipating a range of Studio One, Two, and Three Bedroom units, so serving about 400 low-income residents in this building. They also anticipate an early, an early learning center on the ground floor, as well as a workforce training center on the ground floor. Next slide, please. This just highlights kind of the importance of the activation of the ground floor of that building, again, being adjacent to the open space and the proximity of that early childhood learning center, being able to take advantage of that open space, being on Johnson, and then directly across the street is parcel six. Next slide, please. The parcel six is kind of, at the heart of the action before you today. We were able to secure in partnership with Related, constructing Hope and Oregon Tradeswomen, $33.5 million from the Portland Clean Energy Fund to invest in the development of middle-income housing on the site with a commitment to net-zero energy development. We believe it'll be one of the first, it's not the first, but one of the first, high-density residential apartment buildings achieving net zero in the country. They are also focusing on middle-income housing, so 60% to 120% AMI. These are our cooks, our preschool teachers, our truck drivers, bus drivers, that could be living here. Also importantly, I think was mentioned earlier in the meeting, this allows us to also expand on a continued commitment to our business and workforce equity goals, but also some on-site training opportunities I'll speak to in a minute. Related has recently announced their kind of design and construction team, so Walsh Construction, PAE engineers, Methune, and ZGF. The scope of work before you today will move us through, will move Related and their team through conceptual design and schematic design, some early environmental assessment work, some geotechnical work, which is very important on this site, some market analysis, and then probably, most importantly, some updated construction pricing. So by late fall, they'll have a better sense of the feasibility of the project as proposed, making go/no-go decisions, and/or where there might be points of pivot or modification in order to move forward. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand it over to Kay online to speak through the term, I think, the next two slides on the loan terms.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and interim Executive Director, Obwa. My name is Kay Little, Jr., and I'm the Investment Manager at Prosper Portland. I'll share a brief overview of, excuse me, of how the non-programmatic predevelopment loan is structured for the parcel six project. It's proposed that Prosper Portland will provide a $750,000 loan to pay for a share of the predevelopment expenses associated with the project. Additionally, Prosper Portland was awarded $33.5 million from the Portland Clean Energy Fund for the redevelopment of the property, and once the funding agreements are executed, $250,000 of those funds will be added to the loan under the same terms and conditions for a total loan of $1 million. As a non-programmatic predevelopment loan on a high-impact project, no interest will be charged on the loan, which will have a term of two years, but the loan will have a 2% fee. Other features of this non-programmatic loan include deferred payments, no payments are due during the term of the loan, and also if the project is deemed infeasible, the loan will be forgiven. Now, because Prosper Portland owns the property, we can't use it to secure the loan, but instead will receive an assignment of work products that were paid for with the loan funds. Next slide. Next slide, please. As Sarah mentioned, this initial phase of predevelopment work is expected to provide concept and schematic design plans, a Phase One environmental report, a market study, and geotechnical report. It will also help the borrower to actually get a better general contractor pricing for the project, and it will inform an updated development budget. So if the borrower elects to pursue the project after completing this phase of predevelopment, they'll use their own financial resources to complete due diligence, design, and permitting, and it's estimated that the full predevelopment costs are roughly $4.5 million. So that completes my overview of the loan terms and structure. I'll hand it back to Sarah.
Thank you. Next slide, please. I do want to just take a moment and pause for appreciation for the Related team. They've been with us for the last couple of years, kind of looking at how to move development forward on the site. So we have benefited from the leadership of Steph Condor locally and her team with Related Northwest. They have also partnered with Melvin Mark, and so collectively, I think they bring a breadth of knowledge of the local market, partnerships, a history of success in affordable housing, and how to structure complex capital stacks and projects and creative financing. So they've been a great asset to our work so far. We also benefit from the partnership and collaboration with Joe Walsh and the leadership of Bill Witty under the Related California team. They bring West Coast market perspective. And then also, because we, Related is undertaking the commitment to net-zero energy, being able to tap into their national expertise, Related is doing a lot of interesting work in the green building, particularly in the energy sector nationally, and particularly in some of their work in New York, and so being able to tap into their expertise as well as I think will be a benefit to this project. Next slide, please. I was briefly touched on our ability to have also leveraged this work and some of our PSF dollars in a continued partnership with Constructing Hope and Oregon Tradeswomen. So we will be using some of those PSF resources to expand their training capacity and using these two developments. So the, I failed to mention, the Home Forward project has made a commitment to cross laminated timber, and then across the street, the Parcel Six was net zero. So they both offer kind of onsite training opportunities, particularly with a focus on green career pathways to their pre-apprentice students, so we're working through right now what a schedule of cohort trainings onsite might look like with the contractors of those two projects. And then Constructing Hope and Oregon Tradeswomen, among others, have also sat on our Labor Management Community Oversight Committee. That committee has been overseeing the business and workforce equity performance of all of the publicly contracted work, and we're making a commitment to continuing that committee to now move into overseeing the vertical construction and private investment on the project as well. Last slide, please. I think this is a project where the cliche is true, where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and so I just, I think it can't be overstated the importance of signaling that Portland, in particular our central city, is open for investment and is open for business, and the need to really spur a spectrum of housing affordability within our central city. And as we do that, being mindful about how those investments happen and who benefits from them, and so I think this project really symbolizes that and sets forth the character of that while also demonstrating Portland's leadership in sustainability and green building technology. So here are just kind of some facts about the benefits of this investment. The Phase One I have defined here is both that initial infrastructure work plus those two residential developments. So being able to create 460 new housing units in the site, creating thousands of jobs while we do so, leveraging that to create workforce development opportunities with our nonprofit partners, and again, reinstating kind of our leadership position within net-zero building and climate innovation. And then, as I mentioned, just unlocking 4 million square feet of, and kind of in this lynchpin area that is connecting many neighborhoods that were hit hard by the housing, by the COVID and housing crisis. I will conclude with that and take any questions. And phone a friend as I need to.
I have one kind of minor question. Just in the breakdown of kind of the funding breakdown, it looked like there was about a million bucks in architectural services for this. That seemed a little high to me for a development like this. Is that, am I way off base? Maybe Commissioner Slick has a view on that, but that seemed like a big number for architectural services for a building.
Can we go back to this slide that has the predevelopment budget, too?
I also want to let Related respond to it, because they can probably give a little more detail.
Steph, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so under the umbrella of architectural services, we have PAE that's working on kind of the net-zero innovation component of it. There's civil, there's structural, so that's all of the consultants that roll up under the architectural. It's a big project, and it's got a lot of goals with the net-zero energy component, so that's the main component of it. And there's a design review piece in there, too, so design review is expensive to get all those materials together and go through that process.
Okay, so it's more than just the architect's work?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. That's all I wanted to sort out. Thank you.
Yeah.
And maybe Related, could you also talk a little bit about why there are two architects associated with the project?
Yeah, absolutely. We selected ZGF and Methune. ZGF is the master planner for Broadway Corridor, and we felt because of their institutional knowledge and long historical experience with the site that they were really critical. Also, they are an international architect that is really known for placemaking, and we really think that it is important to produce a building that is really going to be something that is prominent and attracts additional investors into the Broadway Corridor area. But partnering them with Methune, Related has a very long history of working with Methune. They're very strong in multifamily. They're very strong in doing great detailed work and really bringing in efficient design. So we think this is a good marriage of having some, you know, efficiency and, you know, the workhorse of Methune coupled with ZGF's long-term experience and ability to really do something that is spectacular for the Broadway Corridor to kick it off. This is kind of the catalyst for what's to come.
I had one more if you were done. Okay. Sarah and Kay, I think in your presentation, you noted that the work product of this project does not move forward would be constrained by our $750,000 predev loan. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Or would we have all of the predev work product assigned to us?
We have all of the predev work product covered by the scope you see on the slide here, so it's not just the 750.
Great. And that aside, I also want to thank you both for all your work on this. It's really exciting to see this project move forward.
Absolutely. I would second that. Any other comments, questions? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Sarah. Appreciate that. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7611, authorizing a predevelopment loan?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Okay. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. Okay, so next, we're kind of running out of time, so we'll try to move along quickly. Item 10 is an action item authorizing the terms of the sale of an 816-square-foot parcel of Prosper Portland-owned property in the Interstate Corridor urban renewal area, and Amy Nagy will present on this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair, Interim Executive Director of WAF. As this is getting pulled up here, my name's Amy Nagy. I am the Interim Director for Development and Investment. I am joined here by Trent Aldridge, who is the Executive Director at Self-Enhancement Inc., who will be providing a little bit more information about their project after I'm done, just with some initial information and presentation about the site. Next slide, please. Ooh, looks like I have some functions in there. That's fun. If you, okay. So Commissioners, I'm here today to talk with you and request that the board take action to approve a disposition of a parcel located at 4500 North Albina Avenue, also known as the Albina Triangle, to Self-Enhancement Inc. Next slide, please. And so this aligns strategically with a couple of our plans, most notably Advanced Portland's Objective 3.8, which is addressing housing production across a continuum of affordability, as well as the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan, which guides the agency's investments in the Interstate Corridor where this property resides. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just a little bit about the site. It is, it's a small site. It's 816 square feet, and it's located along Albina, just north of North Prescott Street. The agency acquired it in, from Multnomah County in the late '70s as part of a transportation project where we were realigning the intersection at, along North Prescott in Mississippi. In the kind of early 2000s, the agency landscaped the parcel, and we've been providing public access ever since. You all actually identified this as a remnant parcel, which means it actually does not have any kind of strategic value in furthering our mission. It also doesn't have any anticipated financial returns for the agency, and a lot of that is due to the fact that it's undevelopable as a single parcel, because it's, the size is limited, the geometry is a little bit funky, and it has a, it carries a public access requirement as well as utility easements. And so the agency spends about $14,000 a year on maintenance costs and just holding the property. I do want to just orient you briefly to the shapes that you're seeing here. So the blue triangle represents the parcel itself that we're talking about. The white outline there, though, is, also encompasses the right-of-way, and so all of that is under our responsibility and kind of tutelage. Next slide, please. Here's just a picture. Sometimes it's helpful to see kind of in real life, this is what it looks like if you were standing across the street from it. Next slide, please. So Self-Enhancement Inc., I think everybody's very familiar with the organization, but just for those who are not, is a longstanding community organization that's been working out of North Northeast Portland to serve youth and their families in the greater Portland area. They do this in a variety of ways, which Trent could talk about, most notably, though, really supporting youth in their own personal and academic achievement by working with the schools, working with the youth's families, as well as the community organizations. A part of that support is also SEI's housing development arm, and so they are doing that in order to create kind of stable families and stable homes. They had actually acquired the parcels right by Albina Triangle back in 2012 with a planned future redevelopment. And so if you look to the right, that's the project that we're here to talk about today, which is Mississippi Place. It is a 30-unit affordable housing project that's intended to serve families with children, and most notably, single-parent households. It also is dedicating 25% of those units to permanent supportive housing, which means some of the most vulnerable members of community will also find space in the building. They approached us about acquiring this remnant parcel to help leverage the development, and I'll talk, if you can go to the next slide, please, about some of the additional benefits. About some of the additional benefits. So, most notably to the project, with the acquisition of this site, it enables them to accommodate the stormwater code requirements, but also adding more greenery around the surrounding area. It also allows for enlarging building area that accommodates some of the support services and the amenity spaces that Trent will talk about in larger units. And so the increased unit size actually supports the principles of universal design, which is really dedicated to folks, no matter ability, age, et cetera, folks can feel comfortable in their space. There'll be dedicated outdoor space, which is promoting wellness and healing, community connection through cultural events, recreational activities, and educational programming for the broader North Northeast community in addition to its residents. So in thinking about some of the complexities and the constraints of having a single site for redevelopment, the opportunities that are presented through attaching this to an affordable housing project, as well as looking at the holding costs, and so staff did that over a forecast of years, which will cost us about $68,000, which actually is more than the property value. Staff recommended that this, and felt this is the highest and best use of the site, and would like to recommend it for disposition. The savings that we will realize, so just under $70,000, can then be reallocated in the budget and used for a different programmatic investment. So it could be a community-based organization grant, it could be a small business grant, something of that nature. Next slide, please. And just as I wrap up here, just kind of timeline and some next steps. SEI, upon your approval, SEI would do some, a brief due diligence period of about 10 days with closing in 30 days, and we would transfer the parcel over to them. They'll continue, as an organization, to finalize the design of the building and the site and finish securing financing, which they're pursuing at the state actively. They'll plan to enter into construction next summer and have the project opening by the end of 2027, early 2028. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and turn it over, Trent, for your comments, and then we'll come back to you all in a little bit for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Yes. Did you get it? Okay.
Thank you, Amy. Chair Cruz and members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Trent Aldridge, and I have the privilege of being the CEO at Self-Enhancement. We're here to request your support for the sale of the small but significant 816-square-foot parcel on 4500 North Albina Avenue. While modest in size, this parcel represents a powerful opportunity to deepen SEI's impact in the heart of the community we've served for over 40 years. SEI is more than a nonprofit. We are trusted partner, we're a cultural anchor, and a catalyst for generational change. Our mission is to guide underserved youth and families to realize their full potential. This parcel will allow us to expand our footprint in a way that directly supports Prosper Portland's strategic goals: fostering inclusive economic growth, promoting equitable wealth creation, and building vibrant communities. Our adjacent Mississippi apartment project is a prime example of that. With the addition of this parcel, we can enhance the stormwater management component of this, meet landscape and coating requirements, and most importantly, create a shared outdoor space that becomes the heart of this, of this project. We're not only trying to build buildings, but build community in them. This project aligns with your Advanced Portland strategy by creating high-quality affordable housing, supportive BIPOC-led development, and investing in neighborhood that has historically faced disinvestment. It is a small parcel, but it carries a weight of equity, opportunity, and community resilience. We respectfully ask for your vote to approve for the sale, not just as a transaction, but as a shared investment in our community's future. Amy did a phenomenal job of speaking to what our intentionality is, and I don't know if a lot of folks know that we are in the housing development space, but we start with the student at the center of all of the work that we do, and we realized very early in our organization's life that a student with barriers went home to a family with barriers. And so our intentionality is always to surround not only the student, but the family and the community in support. And so this is just another example of us doing that great work over 40, 44 years, and our hope is to continue to do that with this project. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Aldridge. Okay, so next, we'll see if there's any public testimony on this item. Pam, do we have any public testimony on this item?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, then. Thank you. So for procedural reasons, we will call, I will call for a motion and a second on Resolution Number 7612. Then we will move to consideration of Item 11, and then we'll come back to 7612. So I hope that makes sense. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7612?
I so move.
I second.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and without objection, we're going to postpone consideration of the pending motion, and we'll go to Item 11. And we'll start with public testimony on Item 11. I have one public testimony card. Do we have any other public testimony on this one, Pam? Okay. So, forgive me. I can't quite read this. It looks like Rasan Mohammed is here to speak on this, so. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Mohammed. And we'll have about three minutes on this. Thank you. Should be. Is it green?
There we go. My name is Rasan Stewart Mohammed. I'm here on behalf of the litigants for the loss of Albina properties. I seem to think that we have lost sight of the history of this body. And if you refer to how you all, this body came into existence, this was part of a federal plan to displace homes. When you look at the Housing Act of 1954 and the desire of the federal government to now change our society coming out of white people living in the suburbs and black people living in the inner cities, working. But after the Korean War, there was a recession. And Ms. Hagens, if, I hope that that is the proper pronunciation of your name. You were asked a question about a recession and how that would affect the funding of this body. But this body was created out of a recession because right after the Korean War, we went into one. In the 50s, at this same time, the desire for white people to move back into the inner cities and with the car companies who were promoting big engines and the 1950 muscle cars, that coupled with the spike in gas prices created a situation where a group wanted to get back into the city. The Housing Act comes into existence, and federal dollars and programs are utilized to target communities and neighborhoods, to remove them from their neighborhoods. And the thing that today concerns me is that just as the expansion for the Emanuel Hospital piece and others, the freeway and others, these things could have been routed in many different areas, but we were targeted. Our neighborhoods were targeted. Right along with the Korean War, you had soldiers. And I want to point something out because I don't want us to lose the fact that this was a direct and deliberate attack against black families. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna point this out. In the Korean War, there were 100,000 black men that were sent off in the beginning of that war. By the end of that war, there were 600,000 black men that were sent to that war. At that time, in the 1950s, according to the census records, there were about 7.5 million black men in the census that were counted at that time. Of that number, there were, there were about 11% of them that were between the age of 18 and 35. That puts the number to 825,000 black males at that age, and 600,000 of them were sent off to the Korean War. That leaves 225,000 black men to provide for their families and homes, and we struggled to do that. You all were created to develop this public-private relationship that allowed the government to target our neighborhoods, utilizing messaging like blight and creating characters like creepy blight monsters and creating this narrative that the black neighborhood in Albina needed to be removed. And we would remove them by redlining and the other tactics that we're familiar with. But guess what? My white side of the family also lived in Albina. My great-grandfather, Hal Garner, lived in Albina, and they were paid to relocate. While the black family, my black side, uh-uh. They were forced out using many, many tactics. And that's how this body came into existence, and that is the history of this body. And to hear you all talk today about how you're developing the city, if we can ask ourselves, property owners, the increase of property taxes that is directly tied to TIF funding and us not being able to afford property taxes, and now you have the whole city that is crying about their property taxes. We were promised one-for-one houses to be built, homes. We keep hearing all of this about housing. You all, you, you, you look like you're building projects that in 10 to 15 years, these high-density areas where you're stacking people up on top of each other. If recession is to come, and we do hit hard times, how are you going to deal with the crime and the violence because you're stacking people up on top of each other? As opposed to rebuilding the city with single-family homes, which is how this city thrived in the beginning, and we're struggling now. So, I don't want to get too distracted with the smiles and the rosy development plans that we hear and we come to these meetings and we hear about because I am of the last of those who were actually targeted, and our neighborhood was destroyed, and we have been sitting here all the way since 2015, waiting for this opportunity to take place. Now, what you're building on the three vacant lots, I just encourage this body. Let me just say this. On June 8th, a precedence and history was made and set by Portland City Council that really, really gave me inspiration for the future of this city. In those deliberations, you all received a phone call. And it was very discouraging to me personally to hear that Prosper Portland didn't quite carry the same spirit that the city council carried in trying to put forth justice for these families as we were pressed down to a measly $2 million. And thank goodness that we had one of the displaced that happened to be a city council member to lead the charge of justice so that we can begin to heal this city. This city council set precedents. It did something that has never been done. It made history. These 27 litigants, we have made history. And it's, it's discouraging that this body was not of that same mind and of that same spirit, or did not appear to carry forth that same mind and that same spirit. Because without healing this wound that we here, who are testifying, represent, without healing and truly healing this wound, and then looking at the true history of why we were targeted, I just might add, through this whole period of time, J. Edgar Hoover was the director of the FBI throughout this entire period that our communities were targeted, coming from Emancipation Proclamation out of the late 1800s. We were the builders. We were the workers. So, we knew how to go right into building and right into working. Then, the union movement was created to remove black workers from the working class and to bring in and train new white workers for the working class. These are the types of attacks that have taken place under the federal government, and organizations like yourselves have been utilized to do it and then come out on the tail end with a rosy history that might not be the true history of who and what we are. And I just wanted to come up here and state that. And hopefully, maybe, we can inspire a change of heart with regards to how we develop this city and build the single-family homes that my children, that I would like to see them grow. I don't want to, I don't want to live in townhomes next to somebody with no armed space. No one wants to live like that. And I understand that the economics may appear to dictate how you build and develop. But we're a special city that we can do special things. And this city council proved that on June 8th of this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Okay, so that's the only public testimony we have on this item. So, next, we'll have Hope and Hope Whitney and Chabri Vickers will present.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Interim Director Abwaf. Today's proposed settlement resolves claims brought by 26 survivors and descendants of families historically displaced from the central Albina neighborhood, as well as the organization they formed to bring these claims, known as EDPA II. Beginning in the 1950s and continuing through the 1970s, many properties surrounding Emanuel Hospital were destroyed under the urban renewal policies of the time, using funds provided by the federal government. The City and Portland Development Commission, now known as Prosper Portland, assisted Emanuel Hospital in these efforts. In 2022, the plaintiffs filed a lawsuit in federal district court and named the city Prosper Portland and Legacy Hospital as defendants. The suit alleged claims of a civil rights conspiracy, unjust enrichment, and public nuisance. The parties participated in a series of judicial settlement conferences resulting in the proposed settlement agreement before you today. Separately, plaintiffs reached a settlement agreement with Legacy Hospital, and the terms of that settlement, including any cash payments from the hospital, are confidential. As a brief outline of the proposed settlement agreement, it requires Prosper to contribute $1 million and the city to contribute $7.5 million. It also provides that Prosper may separately reimburse a portion of that city payment. Again, this is separate and in addition to any settlement reached with Legacy under their confidential settlement. The settlement also includes a number of non-monetary terms that plaintiff requested and negotiated. Those are the opportunity to acquire up to two vacant or surface lot properties from Prosper Portland at no cost. These properties are located at 3620 Northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and 240 Northeast MLK. And they have an estimated value of $1.12 million and $1.18 million, respectively, for a total estimated property value of approximately $2.3 million. The resolution as drafted also memorializes the decision not to include an additional third property in the settlement. That property was the subject of the prior board item. The other items of non-monetary relief include the ability to use the MLK Heritage Marker site up to four times per year at no cost, a Descendants Day proclamation from the city for at least five years, and that the city and Prosper will provide letters of support for any grant-funded documentary about central Albina for 10 years. Finally, several items will become effective to the extent the city's renovation of the Keller Auditorium goes forward. These include an interior display curated by the plaintiffs, as well as opportunities for descendants of displaced families to participate in the design and planning committees and a 10-year hiring preference for city jobs related to Keller. So, now I realize I forgot to introduce myself, Hope Whitney, General Counsel. And I will turn it over to Chabri Vickers, who is our Director of Equity Policy and Communications. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Abwaf. I'm Chabri Vickers, Director of Equity Policy and Communications here at Prosper Portland, and I look forward to sharing just a bit of additional context as relates to our work here. So, of course, due to the constraints of the legal, of this litigation, the settlement can only resolve the claims of the 26 individual litigants, or, excuse me, plaintiffs and EDPA II, the organization representing the individual plaintiffs. So, it's important to note that Prosper Portland recognizes and acknowledges the harm that we've just heard about, but to the entire neighborhood and the broader community because of these historic displacements. As many of you know, I started my time here at Prosper Portland just over three years ago. And prior to that, served on a few committees connected to Prosper Portland's work and community, namely, the Inclusive Economic Development Strategy, or IEDS, the North Northeast Leadership Committee, the Jade District Steering Committee, and the Williams and Russell Project Working Group. Prior to those organized group settings, my community advocacy work as executive, as an executive community member of the Portland African-American Leadership Forum, or PULF, now known as Imagine Black, was where I, as a younger activist alongside other community leaders, pushed back on then PDC's lack of community engagement practices. I did this from the perspective of a community member whose own family has been displaced, and all while living in the rapidly changing Alberta neighborhood, which I lived in until just a few years ago. As a third-generation Portlander, raising my fourth-generation daughter in northeast Portland, the impact of the work of this agency does remain personal to me. Amid doing the work I specified earlier, what I know to be true is the community wanted more than just the past harms to be acknowledged, but to be centered in how decisions are made, especially those that impact them the most. So, to that, and the city and Prosper have been working for well over a decade to address the impacts of this systemic displacement. Today, as we consider this settlement, I think about the time when some of the plaintiffs sat at the table alongside myself and others on the CDC board to ask Legacy Health, the city of Portland and Prosper Portland, to show up differently and to work to turn the land held back over to the black community. While this settlement is differently aligned than our continued efforts with regard to this parcel, we know that this work must continue to develop to meet the community's needs. Much of what we see now demonstrated across our agency's business lines include stronger community engagement practices. With over 40 different committees, task force, working group, and community leadership committees convened, we are heading in the right direction. But the work isn't near to being done, and we aren't doing it alone. While we have accomplished a lot, we continue to build trust across all communities in Portland, and we remain especially intentional with the black community in particular, in part due to this, these past harms, but otherwise because economic development work is only truly impactful if it is in fact inclusive and centers those most marginalized by mainstream systems. We are doing this work through early concerted engagement that is often co-created, responsive, and iterative as we work to develop stronger relationships and foster deeper trust. We also consider sequencing, excuse me, the sequencing of our investments and working on policy that moves the efforts of the agency and its mission of inclusive economic development forward. The city and Prosper Portland issued formal apologies in 2017 and are presently working through community, excuse me, community collaborations, such as those with Williams and Russell and the Albina Vision Trust Partnership. And as you all touched on earlier during the TSCC hearing, just late last year, you all approved a $10 million forgivable loan to the Williams and Russell Community Development Corporation and the Black Business Hub LLC for environmental remediation, pre-development, and construction at the Williams and Russell property site. With stewardship and leadership by the Williams and Russell CDC, this investment will support about 20 homeownership units, 80 to 90 units of affordable rental apartments, and a 30,000-square-foot black business hub. The city is also working through its initiatives, such as the North Northeast Housing Strategy and the North Northeast Community Development Initiative. The North Northeast Neighborhood Housing Strategy has invested over $135 million to produce near, new homes for rent and purchase, as well as home repair and first-time homebuyer services in historically black neighborhoods of Portland. Now, over the past 10 years, the resulting work guided by community vision has produced 865 affordable rental homes, open and in development across 11 projects in the city, produced 115 affordable homes for purchase, open and in development across five projects, and stabilized 1,300 households with home repair grants and forgivable loans. This work has also helped 127 households become first-time homeowners. Now, homes produced by the strategy are subject to the North Northeast Preference Policy, a first-of-its-kind measure for prioritizing applicants for affordable housing opportunities, excuse me, affordable housing opportunities based on their generational ties to an area impacted by urban renewal. This policy helps to ensure that displaced former residents of North Northeast Portland and their descendants are given the opportunity to return to the neighborhoods they once called home. Now, the preference policy has been studied by cities around the country, becoming a model for their own efforts to address gentrification. This strategy and the efforts of Williams and Russell CDC, whose mission is to create an energetic community that supports the economic and community growth of black Portlanders through the development of high-quality townhomes and apartments and an energetic business and community hub. and community hub. The work led by the CDC uses reparative development, which focuses on acknowledging and repairing the causes and consequences of human rights violations and inequality, often through programs that address both individual and community needs. Now, moving forward, the Williams and Russell Project and the efforts with our longstanding North Northeast Leadership Committee continue to address and center the communities needed and directly involve them in helping us make decisions on how our work continues in these neighborhoods. While the work we have done over the past years has been lauded by some and as witnessed by some of the recent awards, we are at a pivotal moment to stay engaged and to consider lessons learned in all of our work moving forward. I am proud of the work staff and leaders that the agency are doing now, and I look forward to deeper and more authentic relationships that help us move forward even further towards our preferred future. Now, this concludes my formal remarks, but we're happy to, of course, answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments, questions?
I have some comments, I don't have any questions. I think that, I just want to say that I feel like we got to start with recognizing sort of that real harm was caused to a community, and that wealth was destroyed in that community. And I think the testimony that we heard was that was targeted and purposeful. And so we need to recognize that, that it's not abstract, it wasn't a theory, it wasn't a good idea, that that happened and caused generational harm. And I think that we're sort of missing an opportunity here. I wish that we had sort of called for a comprehensive reparations impact analysis for this community, given the historical and deep harms that were caused, so that, you know, I think we're talking about 27 people. And I think the work that Chabri outlined is talking about a broader community, but the reality is a real reparations plan for our community and a real sort of study and analysis of that, that not only is that Prosper should be accountable to, but the city itself should be accountable to, and Legacy Health Systems, and the banks and lenders that contributed to this real harm. And I think that that's something that I feel like our city should take on and do in a real way, and, you know, I'm going to set our country aside for right now, because that's a dumpster fire. So I think as we sort of move forward with this settlement, and I'm going to encourage us to approve the settlement, for the plaintiffs in this class, I do feel like we need to look to the future to make sure that we are not repeating this. And that when we think about sort of the saying, "community engagement," that really does mean community decision-making, and what does, and really looking at the long-term displacement and disruption that we can be causing if we are not careful, methodical, and thoughtful, and that we are not partnering with lenders and other folks who recognize that as well. So I just want to put that out there as a part of our sort of continued efforts.
Thank you. Comments? No? Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Chair Cruz, I understand she had to step away, she was not feeling well.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I will just, I can't really elaborate too much further on the comments already made. I agree with Felice's comments, and I am just grateful for everyone attending today and for everybody's presentation. Thank you to the staff, and thank you to the public testimony. So I think we'll go ahead with our vote on this item. This is Resolution Number, forgive me, 7613. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7613?
I would like to make a resolution of 7613.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we'll go back to Item 10, which we had paused on to consider Item 11, and we will go ahead and take a vote on Resolution Number 76112.
Motion to approve, 76112.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all right. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Passes unanimously as well. Okay, any last comments from the board? There being none, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. What?